Good to know. Good evening. The Board meeting of the Board of Education for October 15, 2019 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Welcome. Tonight, in addition to approving two policies, we will be approving our board goals for the 2019-22 school years, as well as a budget development calendar which is aligned with our new district vision and a timeline for the Community Engagement for the Student Success Act. At the risk of sounding like this is a game show, apparently there was some cash that was found right by the front door. So if anyone lost a wad of cash and can identify how much it was
(Laughter)
and what president is on it, go see Cara Bradshaw, please.
Benjamin?
(Laughter)
Or James Madison.
All right. At this time, the Board will vote on its business agenda. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the business agenda?
Yes.
Do I have a motion and a second to...
Wait, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, there are, okay.
The Bond Accountability Charter, is that what you're referring to?
The Audit Function Charter.
Right.
And, so this was in the packet and this afternoon Director Bailey had a two, what I would consider and what are considered non-material changes. One was a moving of information to a different part of the charter function, and this is resolution... 5971. And, in addition...
I don't have any tear problems, but I'm gonna work it out. Proceed.
In addition, Director Bailey, there was also a term that talked about audit engagement, and Director Bailey asked that we put that in sort of plain English. And so there is a modification if people have the... Ms. Bradshaw, were they distributed?
Yes, and they're posted.
Okay. So the change should read...
Is this the business agenda?
Yes, it's in the business agenda.
So this is the...
Audit Charter.
This is the Portland Public Schools Internal Performance Audit Charter.
Yes, can I borrow that for a second?
Yes. It was in the packet of things that were on our desk when we got here.
So it should have been a routine, just business agenda item, but because there were two, again, we just want to flag them for the Board, two non-material changes that were made this afternoon. So I'd like to move the amendment, that technical amendment that was made by Director Bailey, into the Internal Performance Audit Charter.
Second. Do we need a vote on? Okay, we'll vote even though it's a technical... Okay, all in favor of this modest amendment to the item on the business agenda for the Audit Charter, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, the amendment passes by a vote of seven to one, with Student Representative Lateral voting...
Seven to one.
Yeah. Excuse me, seven to zero, and with a student representative voting yes. Thank you. All right, we can return to the business agenda. Are there any other changes to the business agenda?
No.
All right.
Are we voting on... We have some things that are pulled out. Are we just voting on part of the business agenda or are we voting on the whole thing?
This vote is on 5968 through...
5970.
No, 5975.
5975, so that's...
Yes, okay.
So all these, we're gonna vote on individually?
So do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda covering resolutions 5968 through 5975? So moved?
Second.
Director DePass moves, and Director Bailey seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on the business agenda?
No.
Is there any Board discussion on the business agenda? The Board will now vote on resolutions 5968 through 5975 and the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
This isn't about any particular agenda item, but the Head Start Annual Report was part of the business agenda, and we're the governing body. And I know that next year, as we look at the Student Success Act and early learning initiatives, it would be useful... Ordinarily, we have a discussion about the Head Start Annual Report, but it would be useful... I know they're not here tonight, otherwise I would ask questions, but to be useful to just get an update on what the work they're doing and how it integrates with the other early learning work that we have underway.
And I think we will get that, not in the context of approving the Head Start, but in the context of our Student Success Act conversations. All right. First, this evening, we have a resolution to designate the month of October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. In recognition of October being Dyslexia Awareness Month, we will be voting on a resolution to designate October 2019 for PPS as Dyslexia Awareness Month. As part of our ongoing efforts to respond to the individual needs of all of our students, we have hired a program administrator for dyslexia this year. Additionally, we will be providing professional development to every first and second grade teacher in the district this year, as well as establishing a community advisory team this fall that will work collaboratively with the Office of Teaching and Learning to plan a family and community event for this school year. We believe these additional supports will significantly improve our efforts to help our dyslexic students reach their full potential. The Board will now vote on Resolution 5976, Resolution to Designate October 2019 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Director Bailey moves, and Director Brim Edwards seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5976. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5976?
No.
Come forward and testify. Thank you. Please state your name.
Thank you, my name is Marty Stockton. To the PPS Board of Education, good evening, my name is Marty Stockton. I co-facilitate the PPS Dyslexia Advocacy Group, made up of over 200 district-wide parents and educators. We appreciate the third annual proclamation of the Dyslexia Awareness Month by Portland Public Schools. As a literacy advocate for all students and in support of our students of color, low income, and students with disabilities that need reading interventions and support right now, there is not enough time today to share all the experiences and backgrounds of our struggling readers in PPS, but I ask each of you to prioritize your learning of focus and attention on literacy this year, specifically for our middle and high school students that will leave PPS lacking literacy skills that will limit their potential. Today, there is a myth that reading and writing instruction is not the responsibility of secondary education. At most middle and high schools, there is no or limited success in systems to identify and provide basic language arts instruction to the incoming tidal wave of students upwards of 50 to 70 percent, depending on race, income, and/or disability, that are not currently reading and writing at grade level. Only 21 percent of Black students in PPS are proficient in reading. There are examples of hope in action within PPS. This evening, I want to elevate two PPS-specific best practices and ask that the district learns from and expands these efforts with urgency. Special education courses in high school. I want to give you a shout... I want to give a shout-out to Roosevelt High School for being the only PPS school to include special education course descriptions in their 2019 and 2020 course guide, the only one. Of particular note to literacy advocates in dyslexia community is the Basic Language Arts Course on page 62, and I included it in my handout, that supports students' phonemic awareness, listening comprehension, sight word recognition, and vocabulary development. My requested action is that special education course descriptions should be included in all high school course guides. Basic, IEP-driven or otherwise, language arts and math classes should be offered at all high schools to serve students significantly below grade level. And maybe they are, but Roosevelt is the only high school clearly communicating it. Thanks to Roosevelt for this best practice for sped students. Item number two, American Sign Language offerings in the high schools. Another shout-out goes to Lincoln and Wilson High Schools for offering American Sign Language, ASL, as one of their world language offerings. Why is this important? Students with dyslexia have mild to severe difficulties processing the written language. ASL provides an alternative to another written language that aligns with the strengths students with dyslexia have, kinetics and visual learners. This alternative could also benefit other students that need to prioritize their progress in basic language arts instruction. Because ASL is only offered in our two West Side high schools, East Side students with dyslexia and parents that understand the system are either applying for transfer hardships to Lincoln and Wilson, taking ASL through Portland Community College, by the way, are completely full, all the ASL classes are on waitlists right now, in the evenings and summer classes, or crossing their fingers that world language teachers provides a conversational class rather than a written emphasis. These are the best-case examples. For students with specific learning disabilities like dyslexia, often the world language requirement is the difference between a high school diploma, a modified diploma, or just another barrier to graduation period. So my requested action is to provide access to ASL to our East Side high schools. Thanks to Wilson and Lincoln for this best practice in providing a world language, a non-written alternative to your students. Finally, moving aside from the advocacy moment that I've shared with you all, I just want to say special thanks to Elizabeth Martin, Dr. Gretchen Schlag, Dr. Tanya McKee, and Jonathan Garcia for sharing this journey, listening to our experiences as parents and educators, building trust and problem-solving, a path forward that improves literacy both broadly in PPS and with target-specific efforts. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have any Board discussion on this item? All right, the Board will now vote on Resolution 5976, which resolves that the Portland Public Schools Board of Education recognizes that dyslexia has significant educational implications that must be addressed, and designates October 2019 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5976 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Lateral voting yes. All right, we have several proclamations tonight. The next is to recognize October as National Substance Abuse Awareness Month. October is National Substance Abuse Awareness Month, and we'll be voting on a resolution to recognize in PPS this designation. Superintendent, or excuse me, Director Moore, would you like to introduce... or excuse me, Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, for the second important proclamation, we have our Chief of Student Support Services, Brenda Martinek, who's gonna provide a description about recognizing October in this additional way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. This month, we highlight National Substance Use Awareness Month. We recognize the struggles that many students and families have with substance use and addiction. This is important to us because as a district, we want all of our students to live healthy and successful lives. To that end, we have developed a continuum of care to support our students and families. We have a number of resources that are currently available on our Student Success and Health Department website. We've added drug and alcohol counselors and mental health supports in our high schools. We've also partnered with Regents and Oregon Health Authority on some grants to provide prevention services in regards to our K-5 training for teachers and in regards to some student support groups, as well as some parent informational sessions. We continue to work hard to break the stigma that's associated with substance use and addiction, and we appreciate the Board's proclamation.
Thank you very much. The Board will now vote on Resolution 5977, Resolution to Recognize October as National Substance Abuse Awareness Month. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Director Bailey moves, and Director Brim Edwards seconds the motion to adopt 5977. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5977?
No.
All right, is there any Board discussion on this issue?
It might be worth noting that later this evening, we're going to be considering and adopting a healthy substance-free learning environment, which really importantly separates out discipline from our drug and alcohol policy, and it's very focused on prevention, intervention, and recovery. So we'll be taking a step tonight. I think also that's really in alignment with the goals of this month as well.
Yeah, thank you so much for noting that. All right, this resolution reads, "Portland Public Schools Board of Education hereby declares October 2019 Portland Public Schools Substance Abuse Prevention Month and urges all community members to join us in recognizing the dedication, hard work, and efforts to support all Portland Public Schools students kindergarten through 12th grade to live healthy lives with the skills they need to address challenges and reach their highest goals and aspirations." The Board will now vote on Resolution 5977. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5977 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Lateral voting yes. Thank you. All right. Another resolution to designate October 2019 as National Principals Month in Portland Public Schools. In recognition of October being National Principals Month, we'll be voting on this resolution, designating it, recognizing it in Portland Public Schools. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Craig Quayar, is gonna provide a description about how we view our school leaders as the catalyst for much of our work and improvement and the significant role they play. Dr. Quayar?
Good afternoon, Board. Every October, National Principals Month aims to celebrate and recognize the essential role that our leaders play in ensuring that our teachers have the conditions necessary to provide optimal teaching and learning opportunities for all of our students. Through our leaders' vision, commitment, and dedication, and resolute desire for all of our students' well-being and achievement, therefore, we want to recognize all of our wonderful leaders here in PPS for the incredible, incredible work that they do on a daily basis at ensuring that all of our students and staffs are thriving and equipped with everything that they need to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quayar. The Board will now vote on Resolution 5978, Designating October 2019 as National Principals Month in Portland Public Schools. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Scott moves, and Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5978. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5978?
No.
Is there any Board discussion on this resolution? Other than the fact that we are very grateful for our principals and their incredible hard work and dedication every day. It is a job requiring many, many different talents and attributes that come into play on a daily basis. The resolution reads, "The Board of Education designates October 2019 as National Principals Month and extends sincere appreciation to school principals for their individual and collective commitment to the success of all students in Portland Public Schools." The Board will now vote on Resolution 5978. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5978 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Lateral voting yes. All right. And we have one more important proclamation. This evening, we will recognize that October is Disability Awareness Month, and we will be voting on a resolution to proclaim October 2019 Disability Awareness Month in PPS. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
I can't think of a better person to invite up than our very own Noel Sisk, who operates as a special education community engagement specialist to speak to this item.
The Board and Chair Konstam, this is something that is near and dear to my heart as a parent of a child who experiences a disability, and as a professional who works as an advocate and a community engagement specialist within PPS for students who experience disability. I just wanted to bring some highlights because I think that behind proclamations, as powerful as they are to build awareness and acceptance, what makes a difference is boots on the ground. What are we doing to make sure that these things are being engaged within our schools and are impacting the students that we are serving, and that they're impacting the families that we're serving? So as a community engagement specialist, in your purple packet, you have an invitation to the October, November, and December community engagement things that I am hosting in collaboration with our community engagement department, which is a very exciting thing to be doing and working together. We'll be hosting IEP training for Spanish-speaking families because we recognize that the barriers of understanding special education are broad and wide, even if you speak English like myself. And when you add the cultural barrier of language, it makes a big difference when all the pieces in front of you are in English, and it's important for families to understand that they're an equal member of that team. And so we'll be doing that in October. We'll be doing a Student Success Act input at Pioneer this October 24th to make sure that our families who have students with disabilities are able to engage in that process and give input around what the types of supports that we really need in our schools to make sure that our students are accessing equitable education like their student... like other students who don't have disabilities. In November, we'll be doing a district-wide, understanding the IEP process, training for families, as well as person-centered planning, which is a student-based, strength-based process for families to bring to the IEP process in order to have better engagement. And then in December, you're all invited to a filming... film showing of Intelligent Lives. Stan Habib is an amazing documentary maker, and we will be showing that film at Grant High School on December 6th. And that'll be community-wide, district-wide, family-friendly. So we want to make sure that we're big... our biggest impact is impacting people who aren't impacted by disability. Those are the people who make the biggest barriers, those are the people who can be our biggest allies, and how do we change that? And so before we change practices, often we need to change what our heart feels about the population we're serving, and I think that's a great time to do it. You have some of my testimony in there. If we have time, I can follow up, but what I really want to make sure we have time for tonight are two parents that are gonna come up and speak and share their testimony with you. Is it time to do that? Or, sorry?
We'll move the resolution.
Oh, sorry.
And we'll be delighted to welcome you.
Perfect.
Thank you. The Board will now vote on Resolution Number 5979 to Proclaim October 2019 Disability Awareness Month. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5979. Ms. Bradshaw, we do know we have some citizen comment. Who do we have?
Yes, we have Angela Jarvis-Holland and Blanca Orozco.
To correct, it's Alma, not Angela.
Okay.
Following Blanca.
Okay, they can both come up at the same time, they're sweet.
And I'm gonna see how to do the translation of Blanca's words.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So just a quick intro. Good evening, my name's Maria Rangel. I'm the outreach, the bilingual outreach program coordinator for ABI. I have been leading an action group that is composed of PPS parents and staff, and as a group, we have supported two parents, Blanca and Alma, who will be sharing a few words today with you, and they've asked me to translate for them this evening.
Hola a todos, mi nombre es Blanca Orozco, soy mamá de cuatro hijos quienes asisten al distrito escolar de PPS. Hoy vengo a contarles un poco sobre mi hijo Ángel, el más pequeño.
Hello, my name is Blanca, and I am the mother of four children who attend the PPS School District. Today, I come to tell you a little bit about my youngest son.
Ángel lleva tres años recibiendo servicios de educación especial y asistía a una escuela que no era de su vecindario. En aquella escuela, mi hijo era el único hispano, y yo no sabía mucho de educación especial. Yo me presentaba a las reuniones de IP pensando y confiando que el sistema escolar iba a ayudar a darle lo mejor y el apoyo a mi hijo, el apoyo que él necesitaba.
Ángel has been receiving special education services for three years and was attending a school that was not his neighborhood school. In that school, my son was the only Hispanic person, and I didn't know much about special education. I would attend the IEP meetings thinking and trusting that the school system was going to give my son the best support that he needed.
Mi hijo estuvo pasando por muchas dificultades en la escuela, comenzó a ser víctima de bullying a lo largo de dos años por otros estudiantes del mismo salón. Yo reporté algunas, algunos incidentes a la escuela y nunca dieron seguimiento a mis reportes, y me era casi imposible comunicarme con ellos por la falta del idioma inglés.
My son, my son was going through a lot of difficulties at school. He began to be a victim of bullying over the period of two years by another student in the same classroom. I reported some incidents to the school, and they never followed up on my reports. It was almost impossible to communicate with them because of the lack of English.
Para mí ha sido una experiencia muy fuerte en donde me sentí impotente de no poder proteger a mi hijo dentro de la escuela y no tener voz para ayudarlo y abogar por él. Y así siguiendo, siguieron pasando los incidentes tras incidentes, y no había ayuda para mí, para mi hijo, ni para mí. Yo me sentía ignorada y que mi voz no valía. Estaba emocionalmente afectada, y mi hijo también.
For me, it has been a very strong experience where I felt helplessless to not be able to protect my son inside the school and not have the voice to help him and advocate for him, for my son, or me. I felt ignored and felt my voice wasn't worth it. I was emotionally affected, and my son was too.
Llevaba dos años sin respuesta positiva, decidí no llevarlo más a la escuela porque temía por su seguridad. El día 23 de septiembre fue el último día que él asistió a la escuela, y comencé a pedir ayuda esperando que alguien me hiciera caso, y así fue como llegué a la organización, todos nacidos dentro, y con Elena Collazo del programa migrante donde recibí un gran apoyo y una ayuda incondicional como la que yo necesitaba. En ese momento tuve personas que me ayudaron en el proceso y me guiaron para saber.
It had been two years without positive responses. I decided not to take him to school anymore because I feared for his safety. September 23rd was the last day he attended school, and I started asking for help, hoping someone would listen to me. That's how I got to the organization ABI and with Elena Collazo. That's how I got to the organization ABI and with Elena Collazo from the migrant program, where I received great support and unconditional help, like the one I needed at that time. I had people who helped me in the process and guided me to know.
Los pasos que me ayudaron, qué pasos seguir para darle solución a mi preocupación, que es una IEP, cuál era la categoría de elegibilidad para servicios de educación especial de mi hijo, qué puedo tener sueños grandes para mi hijo y que mi, mi voz tiene derecho a ser escuchada.
They guided me to know what steps to take to solve my concern. What is an IEP? What was the eligibility category my son had to qualify for special education services? That I have, that I can have big dreams for my son and that my voice has the right to be heard.
A pesar de esto, hasta el día de hoy, mi hijo continúa sin asistir a la escuela y me da miedo y mi corazón se llena de frustración al pensar en su futuro. Siento que el sistema le ha fallado y le continúa fallando cada día que pasa.
Despite this, to this day, my son continues without attending school, and this scares me. And my heart is filled with frustration at the thought of his future. I feel that the system has failed and continues to fail with each passing day.
Un punto importante que noté en el transcurso de, de esta dificultad es que el sistema ignora mi voz, que como padre hispano, no tenemos el mismo poder de voz que otros padres tienen, que son privilegiados y por eso no, 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 y por eso son escuchados.
An important point that I noticed in the course of this difficulty is that the system ignore my voice, that as Hispanic parents, we don't have the same voice power that other parents have, that they are privileged, and that is why they are heard.
A través de mi experiencia, algo que a mí me ayudó y que sería de gran ayuda para otros padres es tener acceso a organizaciones que nos apoyen para entender la educación especial y encontrar empoderamiento que nos dé la confianza para darle poder a nuestra voz para que no sea ignorada y que haya colaboración entre estas organizaciones y el personal de PPS.
Through my experience, something that helped me, and I know that it will be of great help to other parents, is to have access to organizations that support us to understand special education and find empowerment that gives us the confidence to empower our voice so that it's not ignored and creating, and also creating collaboration between these organizations and PPS staff.
Espero que mi historia sea ayudada para ustedes, para ayudar a padres que están, están pasando por mi misma situación. Muchas gracias a todos.
I hope my story is helpful to you and helping other parents who are going through the same situation. Thank you very much for your attention tonight.
Thank you. Gracias.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alma Mora, y soy mamá de cuatro estudiantes de PPS. Como líder en la comunidad he tenido la oportunidad de escuchar muchas historias y ver muchas injusticias con las familias que tienen niños con discapacidad.
Good evening, my name is Alma Mora, and I am the mother of five PPS students. As a leader in the community, I have had the opportunity to hear many stories and see many injustices with families that have children with disabilities.
Historias como la de Blanca son experiencias que viven en comunidades minoritarias casi todos los días.
Stories like Blanca's are experiences that minority communities live almost every day.
Mamás que llevan a su hijo el primer día de escuela en un salón contenido de educación especial donde solo se habla el inglés, la única comunicación que posiblemente hayan tenido en una carta escrita en inglés. Mamás que caminan los pasillos esperando nerviosamente y viendo cómo son ignoradas cuando quizá tengan el suficiente valor de ir a la oficina para pedir ayuda, reciben un simple, "No hablamos español."
Mothers who take their children to the first day of school to self-contained classrooms where only English is spoken, the only communication they may have had is a letter written in English. Moms who walk the halls waiting nervously and seeking how they are ignored. Sorry. Had is a letter written in English. Moms who walk the halls waiting nervously and seeing how they are ignored. When they may have enough, when they may have enough courage to go to the office to ask for help, they receive a simple, "We don't speak English."
Mi segunda historia es de mamás cuyos hijos o hijas han sido diagnosticados con alguna discapacidad. Estos estudiantes asisten a escuelas de inmersión dual en español. Durante reuniones de IEP, los servicios ofrecidos al estudiante solo pueden ser en inglés cuando está aprobado que la educación bilingüe es fundamentada en el desarrollo del primer idioma para luego transferir los conocimientos al segundo idioma.
My second story is about mothers whose sons or daughters have been diagnosed with a disability. These students attend dual immersion schools in Spanish. During IEP meetings, the services offered to the student can only be in English when research says bilingual education is based on the development of the first language for later, for later transfer into the second language.
Espero que al escuchar estas historias puedan abrir sus corazones, y me gustaría que por un momento reflexionaran y se pusieran en nuestros zapatos. Que el distrito está en el proceso de colectar información sobre cómo utilizar nuevos fondos para el acta de estudiantes exitoso. Nuestra propuesta incluye los pasos que pensamos crearía el mayor impacto a nuestros hijos que tienen inglés como segundo idioma y reciben servicios de educación especial.
I hope that upon hearing these stories, you can open your hearts, and I would like you to reflect for a moment and put yourself in our shoes. I know that the district is in the process of collecting information on how to use the new Successful Student Act funds. Our proposal includes the steps that we think would have the greatest impact on our commu, on our children who have English as a second language and receive special education services.
La contratación de una persona que tome el rol de educar, apoyar en la navegación del proceso y abogar por las familias que no hablan el inglés. Antes, durante, y después de las reuniones de IEP, tenemos el derecho de ir a la mesa de reunión con las mismas herramientas y poder que cualquier otro padre en el distrito.
The hiring of a person who plays the role of educating, supporting the process navigation, and advocating for families who do not speak English before, during, and after IEP meetings. We have the right to go to the meeting table with the same tools and power as any other parent in the district.
El reclutamiento, la contratación, y retención de maestros de educación especial, terapeutas del habla, y psicólogos que sean multilingües y culturalmente competentes.
Recruitment, hiring, and retention of special education teachers, speech therapists, and psychologists who are multilingual and culturally competent.
Que los IEP sean traducidos a otros idiomas, ya que los padres tienen el derecho de entender su contenido.
The translation to IEPs and to other languages. Parents have the right to understand their content.
Desarrollo profesional sobre equidad y su intersección con raza, lenguaje y discapacidad para todo el personal de todas las escuelas, no solo las escuelas que tengan un estudiante diverso, un estudiantado diverso, un solo estudiante o familia que sea invisible es demasiada pérdida para nuestro distrito y la posibilidad de ser mejores seres humanos.
Professional development on equity and its intersection with race, language, and disability for all staff in all schools, not just schools that have a diverse student body. A single student who is invisible is too much of a loss for our district and the possibility of being better human beings.
Desarrollo profesional para interpretes, para que puedan comunicar mejor los conceptos y lenguaje utilizados durante las reuniones de IEP, y oportunidades para los padres para evaluar la eficiencia, eficacia de, de la interpretación.
Professional development for interpreters so they can be, they can better communicate the concepts and language used during IEP meetings and opportunities for parents to evaluate the effectiveness of the interpretation.
Esperamos que nuestra propuesta sea considerada y que trabajemos juntos para crear alianzas para el éxito de cada estudiante de PPS. Queremos romper barreras, crear cambios, ser incluidos, visibles, y considerados a la hora de tomar decisiones.
We hope our proposal will be considered and that we work together to create partnerships for the success of every child in PPS. We want to break barriers, create changes, be included, visible, and considered when making decisions.
Nuestro grupo de acción quisiera extender una invitación a todos ustedes para que se unan a nosotros para una cena en nuestra mesa. Queremos una conservación para hablar de estas ideas y las intersecciones en ellas. Quizás podamos reunirnos en el edificio de MESD donde nos reunimos con nuestro grupo de acción. Hay un área de cocina allí, o podemos ir a un restaurante.
Our action group would like to extend an invitation to you all to join us for a dinner at our table. We want a conversation to discuss these ideas and the intersections in them. Maybe we can meet in, in the MESD building where we meet with our action group. There's a kitchen area there, or we can go to a restaurant.
Muchas gracias por su atención y consideración.
Thank you very much for your attention and consideration.
Thank you so much. Do, do the materials that you've given us tonight have your request or proposal in them?
They do, along with other information.
And do we have the dates of your, when you meet at MESD for your action group?
I believe our next action group is scheduled already, however, it's not on the folders. But Noel can probably give that info real quick.
Can you follow up with Ms. Powell, please, on those dates and your invitation? Thank you very much. Thank you.
While we're asking for things, could we also get the dates for the two trainings on IEP?
Yeah, they're in there as well in the purple packet in the form of a flyer.
I think we need one more of those black folders too, before you go, if you have it. Okay, any further board discussion on this resolution?
I just want to say thanks to Allborn Inn for promoting the testimony tonight. I think it's really important. We've been a siloed organization for a long time, and I think this is an attempt to break down some silos between parent engagement, special education, and language services. And there's a lot of work to be done there. And as, and we also know the current condition of trying to get skilled bilingual teachers is really challenging. So, it's up to us, though, to see if, in the meantime, we can fashion together some other solutions, the best, the best that is available. I know back when I was running for office in one week, I met with four different parents, four different races, very strong advocates. The one thing they had in common was that they all felt they got completely steamrolled in the IEP process. And I can only imagine what it's like if you don't speak English. It just makes it that much more challenging. And trying to find interpreters that have the technical background to correctly translate is a real challenge as well, but that's what we need to focus on. So, thanks again.
The resolution reads, "Portland Public Schools Board of Education proclaims October 20, 2019 as Disability Awareness Month and galvanizes efforts that will lead our schools and policymakers to create real systems of change so people with developmental disabilities will enjoy equitable, inclusive educational experiences." The Board will now vote on Resolution 5979. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5979 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you very much.
Should also say this, this discussion completely overlaps with the dyslexia discussion earlier as well.
And I also wanted to point out that with each of these proclamations tonight, except for the principal proclamation, we will have links on our website to district activities in each of these areas and community resources. If they're not already there, they will be shortly. Thank you very much. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to provide your superintendent's report?
Thank you, yes. When I started this, everyone. I wanted to focus on a couple topics. One, to recognize many of our talented educators and leaders for some important recognitions that, that they've earned. Starting with, in the picture there. We, at Franklin High School, had one of our special education educators, Ms. Mercedes Munoz, who was named Oregon's 2020 Teacher of the Year by the Oregon Department of Education, which is a great honor. This was a surprise assembly with the entire student body in the gymnasium. Thank you, those of you that were able to join us, along with many of our state education leaders and quite an array of media. Turned out to be a very wonderful morning at Franklin, and just wanted to wish once again Mercedes for that highest honor. And we're just happy that one of PPS's finest has the accolade of the 2020 Teacher of the Year. So, congratulations, Mercedes. And there's more. I'm also proud and pleased to share that Ricky Almeida, counselor at West Sylvan Middle School, was named Oregon School Counselor of the Year by the Oregon School Counselor Association. We know that our counselors play a critically important role in the success and well-being of our students, and it's inspiring to see one of our very own counselors receiving this award. So, congratulations to Ricky Almeida. And also, we learned of multiple PPS winners at the recent Oregon Art Education Association Awards also. So, I definitely want to list those. OAEA Educator of the Year, Addie Kessler from Lincoln High School. National Art Honor Society Advisor of the Year, Lily Windell from Lincoln also. Elementary Art Educator of the Year, Nicole Penuncello. I hope I'm saying that right, from Buckman Elementary. And for distinguished service to the profession, Carolyn Hazel Drake, our very own PPS Tosa, who's joined the team. So, congratulations to Addie, Lily, Nicole, and Carolyn. Thank you for your leadership and enriching our visual performing arts experiences for our students. So, congratulations to our teachers. Not to be outdone, I also want to recognize Principal Isaac Cardona, who's here in the audience with us, as well as Assistant Principal Alma Velazquez from Woodlawn, who through a national selection process were both nominated and selected to year-long fellowships with Unidos U.S. You may know the organization as the formerly National Council of La Raza. This is quite a privilege to be selected. The fact that there's any folks from Oregon, let alone two, from Portland Public Schools is quite an honor. So, thank you, Isaac, for representing us there at Unidos U.S. We know this will be an important leadership development and policy advocacy opportunity for, for them. There he is. It's kind of like a baseball game, you know? There he is in the audience. Stand up and dance. And then, secondly, I wanted to just provide a little bit more of an update or commercial for our continued topic of the month, for the next couple of months, and that is with the Student Success Act, especially given the constrained timeline that, that we're working under. But we've certainly been working in earnest, I should say, the team has. This, this past week, we dedicated a good portion of our principals' monthly meeting to review once again sort of the equity-oriented focus of the Student Success Act. Spent the afternoon having our principals going through an exercise to provide their own input and feedback, and we're synthesizing that input into some themes. But we also talked about the process that they'll be leading with all of their faculties in school communities across every one of our 79 schools. So, we're looking forward to collating all that information. It's a process we're proud to have collaborated with PAT, as well as PAPSA Leadership on. And even though we didn't have, we don't have the benefit of a lot of time, I think we're taking I think we're taking the four to six weeks that we do have to create as many meaningful opportunities for folks to weigh in and lend input. Part of that is to identify some of the barriers and the needs, but also to gather ideas and input for what some of the solutions might be. I want to thank our principal supervisors, many folks here in the central office, our new director of community engagement, Shanice Clark, Jonathan Garcia, Deputy Superintendent Hertz. Really, there's a whole team of people who are spending a lot of time thinking about a process for capturing all of this. And of course, we're employing our new Dr. Russ Brown to get that data and synthesize it all in a way that we can actually have a conversation about in the end. October 22nd, every single one of our schools during their staff meeting will be going through this actual input and needs assessment exercise at their school. Thank you, PAT President Suzanne Cohen, for recording a little video intro with me so that everybody hears the same message and understands how important their feedback is going to be. So we are busy preparing the materials and training a number of staff for, in addition to the school community conversations, some larger community-based sessions, which will be joined with organizations like the Coalition of Communities of Color, Stand for Children, and others. But we're also taking a targeted approach to facilitate a number of smaller focus group sessions, some with our charter schools, some special education focus groups, migrant education families, parents of English language learners, and other PPS community groups. These meetings begin this week with larger events at Lent on Thursday, Fabian on Saturday, Roosevelt on Tuesday, and Pioneer School next Thursday. Folks can look on the PPS website for the full calendar of opportunities to weigh in. We also want to make sure people know they don't have to attend an in-person community meeting or focus group. We have a survey live on our website where folks can also go ahead and enter their input in writing, if that's more convenient for them. We're moving very quickly. You've seen this timeline before. School districts are challenged all up and down the state. This is the topic of the month. And even though we're squeezed for time, we're trying to give this as meaningful an effort as possible so that we can begin to articulate what our continuous improvement plan and that we're compliant with the requirements of the Student Success Act. So directors, stay tuned to learn more about what say our stakeholders out around the district. And I'm going to keep it brief and stop there. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, before we begin the public comment period, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to us. We value public input as it informs our work, and we will look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen without distraction from electronic devices. One quick reminder, any oversight signs need to be in the back foyer, and signs in the audience should not be held in any way that obstruct viewing. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you please give them to Ms. Powell to distribute to us. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
We have public comment. Allegra Heidelinde and Jennifer Breedlove.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello. My name's Allegra Heidelinde. My last name is spelled H-E-I-D-E-L-I-N-D-E. And I am here tonight with other parents from Bridger Elementary, and on behalf of parents who cannot attend this evening, to alert you of a situation facing students in the third-grade neighborhood class and let you know how you can help support them. So Bridger is a two-third Spanish language immersion, so there is only one neighborhood class for each grade. And as of yesterday, the second Monday in October, the classroom rebalancing date, there are 32 children in our third-grade neighborhood class. Our class has been over the threshold number of 26 students every year since kindergarten. We have 31 to 33 students every year. And with only one neighborhood class per grade, there's no cap on class size and no ability to spread the students out between classes to help with academic or behavioral dynamics, of which we have many. We have five students who are on I E P plans, Individual Education Plans, and multiple students in the class whose family's primary language is not English. We have academic challenges and behavioral challenges. And many of us here tonight volunteer and are feeling very concerned that now in third grade, many of these students are not reading at grade level. We're here tonight because we want all the children in this class to fulfill the PPS mission. Every student by name prepared for college, career, and participation as an active community member, regardless of race, incomers of code. To help achieve the PPS mission, we're advocating for an educational assistant to be placed in our classroom. A teacher stipend will do nothing to help these kids or further the PPS mission. The late date of the classroom rebalancing, the second Monday in October, which was yesterday, means that these students do not have adequate support during the critical first weeks of school every year. We've met with our principal, we've met with Dr. Esther O., the new regional superintendent, and now we're coming to you. We want all of the students in this class to succeed. So please consider changing the classroom rebalancing date or making an exception possible so that our class isn't faced with the same problem next year. The third graders in the neighborhood program at Bridger need support if they're going to fulfill the PPS mission. You can help by using your influence to support an educational assistant being placed in this large and needy classroom and advocating for the change or the removal of the late October date for classroom rebalancing so that we don't face the same problem again next year. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Breedlove, and I have a brief comment about an experience that I had yesterday. This has to do with the item that you have on the agenda about a healthy student curriculum. I was given the opportunity to speak with Justice Block Jeff Rhodes, who is advisor to our governor, Kay Brown, the Multnomah County Sheriff Reese, and also Dr. John Polo. Some of the items that were brought up were education and mental health, and also substance use and abuse, and educating our children with evidence-based curriculum and at a younger age, not waiting till high school, and actually bringing that up for them as early as kindergarten, giving them an opportunity to learn about how to stay substance-free. Myself, growing up as a PPS student, there was a DARE program that was put into place. And conversing with a friend the other day who also grew up in the PPS district, we both said, "Why didn't we do drugs?" Oh, it could have been possibly because that was relevant in school at a young age, learning about that DARE program. Following up with all of the parents and speaking about disabilities, I just wanted to bring this up as a side note, too, as well. My son suffers with autism. And it was challenging for me as a parent to be able to work full, I'm a single parent, by the way, to work full-time, and then also maintain a relationship with the school to pick him up anytime they needed to because they didn't have enough supports in there. So I just want to encourage the board and Guerrero and the deputy superintendent to really look into funding supports for teachers. From what I've noticed is that our teachers seem exhausted. They don't have enough resources. They don't have the mental health help that they probably should be able to ask for. And I think that would be very encouraging to have within your dynamics to support the teachers with that. Maybe they could teach well, teach better, be able to have students reach their reading and math goals that they are not reaching at this time. So, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Chair, can I just offer a point of information clarification? Because I know enrollment balancing and staffing has been an ongoing review process. And it was late last week that Deputy Superintendent did approve the educational assistant for Bridger. Your principal is aware of that. Probably the communication has not gone out to the entire community quite yet, perhaps. Craig Wayar is there in the back if you want to have a conversation with our deputy. Thank you.
Thank you. Good news. Thank you.
However, the colocation continues to be an issue.
We have, there's more public comment, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward.
Holly Cook and Laura Hall.
My name is Laura Hall. I do communications work in the field of emergency management, and I am a mother of a kindergartner at Chief Joseph Elementary and a preschooler who will be there in a few years. I testified in front of this board back in May, and I emailed that written testimony to the entire board last night, just to get everybody up to speed with where we're at. Thank you, Ms. Brim Edwards, for your prompt reply. I'm here with Holly Cook. She and I are members of a group called P for P, or Parents for Preparedness. We're a group of parents, school staff, and community members working to make schools safer and more resilient to disasters. While we focus mostly on earthquakes, much of what we do pertains to other types of disasters like the extreme weather and wildfires that we will increasingly see due to the climate crisis. P for P has around 200 members representing 50 schools, and we are seeing rapid growth as our community becomes more aware of the risks that our children face. P for P has thoughtfully examined numerous ways that the district could increase student and staff safety during disasters. We see a lot of room for improvement in making classrooms safer, improving drills, and ensuring that staff have what they need to care for themselves and our children in the event of a disaster, especially one that extends past school hours. I also emailed you a document called Lessons Learned, which outlines a lot of information about simple ways that we could communicate with parents so that they could play a role in stepping forward and not just complaining. We'd love to talk with you more about a lot of those issues and concerns, but today we just want to talk to you about communication. We've learned that little, if any, work will get done at schools if the adults, parents, and staff are unaware of, unconcerned with, or overwhelmed by the risks that we face. We believe the first step forward is to make sure that everyone gets regular, consistent messaging that disasters are inevitable, and we all have a role to play in preparing. We have done our level best to get that message out, but we are mere parent volunteers. Our reach is limited, and by and large, we represent schools of social and cultural privilege. Our work does not impact the lives of all children in the district, which makes this an issue of inequity. And we are here today to make sure that all parents and staff in every school in the district gets the message. I study disasters at work, and I can tell you there's a huge body of work pertaining to the effect of disasters in the lives of children. We know that children can suffer very serious, long-term effects from disasters, which are intensely compounded by social vulnerabilities such as race, socioeconomic status, and language. And we know that during a disaster, acute stress can be relieved by minimizing the amount of time that children are separated from their loved ones. We also know that during a disaster, PPS staff will want nothing more than to return to their homes to care for their loved ones. That's why we want to make sure that every parent in the district receives regular, consistent messaging, have some basic supplies on hand, but much more importantly, have a family emergency plan and update it regularly. After a cascades abduction zone earthquake, we don't want any children left waiting for their parents when the sun sets.
I don't know if I should wait for the red light to go off. I should just go. My name is Holly Cook. I am an architect and the mother of two kids at Sunnyside Environmental School. P for P would like the district to commit to sending at least one paper flyer per year to parents on the topic of disaster preparedness. This is an incredibly cost-effective way to increase school and community resilience. We have spent the past year trying to get a flyer into the hands of all PPS parents. We drafted one that aligns with regional messaging being used by our partners at the Portland Bureau of Emergency Management and Multnomah County Emergency Management, and both offices have sponsored the flyer. PPS's own Security Services Department even translated the document for us. We tried to get a paper copy of the flyer to all parents at the start of the school year. PPS emergency manager Kyle Olson and interim director of Security Services Molly Emmons tried their best to help us. We're incredibly grateful for our relationship with them, but the paper flyer didn't fly. Next, we pursued having it emailed directly to all parents, despite our reservations, because not all families have access to computers, but that didn't work either. A few things did happen. An article about the Great Shakeout Drill was in today's PPS Pulse newsletter, which is an email publication that is used to communicate non-essential messages to parents. And the flyer we created is being sent directly to administrators, who have the option to share it with parents and staff. But we're guessing many won't. We understand that the district and school administrators are cautious of sending too many messages to parents. If they constantly receive messages, they'll ignore them, and critical school-related information will get missed. We get that. But this is a critical message. It's not a normal message. It's an extraordinary message, and it should be given a proper platform. The newsletter article and the flyer emailed to administrators are a start, but we want to see direct communication on paper so that every family can receive the message. We're trying to influence and change culture in an equitable way, which requires a special delivery. Communication about preparedness must be strong and come from the top in order to distinguish the message from communications about parties and run-of-the-mill district news. Our question for you is, will you help us get this message to all PPS families and staff? The PPS Communications Department isn't being difficult. They're following protocol. We're asking the board to make preparedness and resilience a district priority so that barriers like the ones we face can be removed. And we'd like to request, and we'll email you separately, a private audience with you and key staff members so we can discuss some of the details of this and a few other projects that we have hit bureaucratic brick walls. We know the size of the task at the district level may seem overwhelming, but it doesn't have to happen overnight, and we have many ideas about how to go after low-hanging fruit. Thanks for your time.
Did you both provide your testimony to Ms. Powell? If you could, that would be great, and thank you for your advocacy. Do we have anyone else signed up for public comment? Okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is consideration of an amendment to the Bond Accountability Charter, referred to as the BAC. We are voting on an amendment to the existing charter. The board will now vote on Resolution 5980, authorizing an amendment to the Bond Accountability Committee Charter. Do I have a motion? Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5980. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5980? Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
I think it's worth, at least, were you going to call out the changes, that, some of the essential elements of the changes? Because I think that's worth noting, especially as we head into the bond planning cycle. Do you want me to get, mind do that? Why don't you start with the future planning, and I'll do some of the other complimentary changes?
So the primary reason that we sought to amend the charter of the Bond Accountability Committee was to give them responsibility and purview for vetting future bond proposals. They have operated on the 2012 bond and now on the 2017 bond in an oversight role, providing a dashboard, an accountability dashboard for many functions and the budget oversight for the bond. But they were not engaged in vetting proposed bond package for 2017 prior to board adoption or bringing it to the voters. So that was the primary change to this charter, was to give them that purview so that we can take advantage of their expertise in building future bond packages.
And so in addition to strengthening the bond planning work, as long as we were amending the charter, we also amending the charter, we also included language about the committee membership that we would hope that would reflect the diversity of the community. Also added in the use of the racial equity and social justice lens, because they're not only inequities in instruction and materials and enrichments, but also in our facilities. So, just like others in the district, we expect that they will use that as well. We also, there's a three-year term limit on the chair, which will allow leadership capacity to be developed. And then finally, there's the Code of Ethics that is part of the charter simplified, and it's linked to the state statute for public officials and agents. And that is how best practice to have all of our advisory commissions that have some sort of ability to impact actions of the district to very clearly know what their responsibilities are in terms of state law.
So, I just wanted to say, in general, before we vote on this, I think it's really essential that we have a Bond Accountability Committee. We have had one. It's been, I think, reasonably successful, and going forward is going to be successful, you know, as well. And I think with these changes, I really support these. What the Bond Accountability Committee does is it enforces transparency and accountability on the government, even when we're doing everything right, having to produce those quarterly reports, having to go to those meetings, having to explain, having those reports come to the board. I think it just ups the game of everyone and makes everyone pay a little bit closer attention. So, this is a good structure, and I'm happy to support it. One thing I do just want to note, though, and some of the discussion, I think, frankly, when some of the 2017 estimates were changing, and then this change in terms of putting the future bond planning into the BAC purview, which makes a lot of sense, I think it's important that we, as a board, remember that the BAC does not, it supplements our oversight of the bond, but it doesn't replace it. And every one of us, you know, as a board member, is responsible for digging just as deep as the BAC members are into bond spending, bond accountability, et cetera. And so, as the Chair of the Bond Committee, I'm going to be encouraging, we're going to be coming back repeatedly, both in the planning of the 2020 bond and in the tracking to the board, and hopefully, again, we've sort of got everyone's, you know, focus on this as we go through the next year and actually beyond, assuming we're successful moving forward. The last thing, and it's a small thing, I do want to note, this does continue a previous policy that was in there about a committee member not serving more than a total of eight years. There's definitely some value in terms of cycling new people on and getting fresh eyes on things, and so I'm fine with that moving forward. I do worry a little bit, when you're talking about a bond program and one that could run longer than that, there is also some value of having people really begin, have a long term, where they really begin to understand the issues in depth. And so, I'd just like to watch over the next couple of years whether we're able to recruit really talented new people to the BAC, and if we lose some really talented people who would have loved to stay on for years nine and 10 and 11, I think it might be worth revisiting that, but for now, I think it's, we'll just monitor as we go forward. Thank you for the changes.
Fair point, and I just want to say to that point how grateful we are for the service of the Bond Accountability Committee members thus far, because they really bring extraordinary and, in some cases, unique experience and expertise in design and construction and public sector capital projects. So, if you're out there, thank you very much.
Any further comment from the board?
I think both our staff and the BAC have focused on delivering as much value as we can for the dollar and saving money wherever possible without sacrificing the mission. And that showed up all the way through the 2012 bond, to the point where we ended up, most recently, with $4.1 million in savings. That was consistent all the way through that, and that'll give us against more money to be used in purposes consistent with the 2012 bond.
Thank you. All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 5980. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5980 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we are moving on to another citizen committee that advises the board. Each year, the Board of Education appoints a Community Budget Review Committee to assist in the annual budget process. The CBRC reviews, evaluates, and makes recommendations to the board regarding the superintendent's proposed budget and any other budgetary issues the CBRC or the board identify. The CBRC also monitors and advises the board on the allocation and expenditure of local option levy funds. Tonight, we are appointing eight members for a two-year term. Superintendent, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, I think we're going to have our CFO, Ms. Cynthia Lay, here to talk about the recommended appointment of members.
Good evening. I am presenting to you the, actually, nine vacant positions for your approval tonight, and they are Sarah Kerr, Roger Kirchner, Irina Phillips, Judah McCully, Brad Nelson, Christine Pitts, Jennifer Samuels, Leisha Posey, and Betsy Salter. And with your approval of these nine members tonight, I would like to make another request for the coming weeks. I would like to request that we collaborate with the board liaison and committee members to develop a clear charter and parameters for the group, including the annual selection process and steps which the board will be co-facilitate in the coming years. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we'll put the resolution forward and then see if there's board discussion. The board will now vote on Resolution 5981, Appointment of Community Budget Review Community Members. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Director Scott moves, and Director Moore seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5981. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on 5981?
No.
Is there board discussion on this resolution?
So, I would welcome the process that you just suggested for the charter and...
Great, thank you, sir. I'm looking forward to it.
So, I'm going to support the slate of candidates that are being recommended, and I want to thank the candidates who are going to be, after the vote, serving on the citizen budget review. But I want to speak just briefly about the appointment process, and I welcome the proposal you've made. Last year, some members of the community raised questions about the sort of opaqueness of the process, and I don't think it was a deliberate opaqueness, but things that may seem clear to us aren't always clear to the community, including the criteria to select appointments. And when the committee doesn't have a charter, although it does say on the district website that CBRC reviews, evaluates, and makes recommendations to the board regarding the superintendent's proposed budget and any other budget issues the CBRC or the board identify, CBRC also monitors and advises the board on the allocation expenditure of local option levy funds. So, last year, when this issue was raised, I asked about board involvement with the appointment process, and there was an agreement that that would happen. And it didn't, but I don't think it wasn't intentional, and I don't think there was any favoritism involved. But I do think, as a community, that there's, we build credibility in our district process, and we have just a clear and transparent process, that people know what the criteria is, sort of what we're looking for, who's going to make the evaluation, if it's something that, if it's a committee or a task force that advises the board, to have some sort of board engagement. And that's especially true, I know this isn't always the case, but in the years in which we have more applicants than we have open positions, I mean, this is a desirable, because it clearly is a pathway to board service, since we have a number of board members who have served on it. But in the years in which we have an abundance of riches, I think it's important that we have a clear process. So, I'm pleased that you're making the offer and that you're going to run that, because I think that we can guard against perceptions of favoritism or arbitrariness, and that that will make us all stronger. And I appreciate the conversations that we've had, and we've had the superintendent over the last couple of days. I think a written charter and a clear process will strengthen the committee and the transparency and the credibility of PPS in general.
Absolutely. Duly noted, and I really appreciate the leadership the board provided to the staff.
How many applicants were there? Fifteen?
And highly qualified.
Any further board discussion on this issue?
I just want to thank the past and future members of the CBRC. Again, they put in a lot of time, and we have made a commitment to be more collaborative with this advisory committee in our budget process, and I think we'll be the better for it. They have sort of worked in their own universe in past years, and the board has worked in its own universe, and I really look forward to the opportunity for all of us to work together. And thank you to Director Lowry, who previously served on CBRC for being our board liaison to that committee.
The board will now vote on Resolution 5981. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5981 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. Okay, now, moving on to two policies that have been in the works for several months. Tonight, the board will be voting on a policy on professional conduct between adults and students. This has been a long time in the making, and I want to thank everyone who provided input on this policy for their sincere and meaningful engagement on these critically important issues. Director Brim Edwards, could you please introduce this item that's coming to us from the Board Policy and Governance Committee?
Great, thank you, Chair Constan. So, in the summer of 2017, it became clear that we, in Portland Public Schools, had had a staff member who, for more than two decades, had engaged in a pattern of misconduct with students, and that PPS lacked policies, practices, and training, and that there were also gaps in state law. And the board, at the time, commissioned the Whitehurst Report, and in May of 2018, the report and all of its findings and recommendations were delivered to the board. And...
Proceed.
I thought you said something. And one of the recommendations was that PPS implement an adult-student boundaries policy. It reads, "We recommend the district adopt a policy to provide its employees with information to increase in awareness of their role in protecting students from inappropriate conduct by adults and ensure that contact and communication with students occur in a professional manner." So, this policy has been in the works almost for a year and a half, and it, the primary objective, it sets clear guidelines and expectations for interactions between adults and students in order to better ensure student safety and prevent adult misconduct. There's been more than a year of research, drafting, and engagement with parents, our employee groups, and staff. And it's important to note, even though the Whitehurst Report recommended and used language relating to staff, that this policy applies to adults. So, that's not just staff, but also contractors and volunteers. The policy, I'm just going to provide just the overarching elements of it. In my tenure on the board, I think this has the potential probably to be the most important policy that we have adopted in the seven years that I've served on the board. The policy emphasizes that strong and healthy relationships between students and staff are important to student learning. It requires annual training, creates clear guidelines for appropriate conduct, sets conduct outside, sets guidelines around conduct outside of a school setting, sets guidelines around appropriate use of email, websites, social media, texting, et cetera. Discusses interpersonal interactions, traveling or transporting students, any sort of physical contact with students. It provides a list of very clear examples of boundary violations and prohibited conduct. It includes information about the duty of adults to report misconduct, and it contains provisions relating to confidentiality and non-retaliation. So, what started out, it wasn't a board committee, it was a task force. I think the committee members and then the public that attended, primarily parents, provided a lot of insights around, how can we create a policy in which we can encourage what we all knew were the healthy relationships that exist between staff and parents and volunteers and students, and then draw some really clear lines and expectations around what was not appropriate behavior. The staff brought a draft. We had very extensive comment back and forth. There's not really a model policy in the country, so I think we spent a fair amount of time developing and discussing really what we want to do, because we certainly didn't want to damage the relationships which are really important for students to thrive in our, in our school system. We had a first reading of this policy, it's a year ago, in October of 2018. Following that, during that public comment period, there were more public comments. We had, you know, parents in the district, school staff reviewed the first draft and made some comments. Then, there was a while in which the policy work was on hold while the Portland Association Teachers and the PPS contract was negotiated. Subsequent to the ratification, we had the benefit of representatives of the Portland Association of Teachers come and engage directly with the committee, which I think was very beneficial. They could provide some sort of real-school scenarios about how the policy would play out and unintended ways, and I think because of their insights and the insights of other staff, I think we have a better policy and will have fewer unintended consequences. The final round of comments were integrated over the last couple of weeks, or I should say, in a moment, I'm going to introduce another one of Director Bailey's sort of non-material, just edits. But I think after all that, we're ready for a vote tonight, and this is really, I think, groundbreaking policy for Portland Public Schools. I want to thank Director Moore, who's been part of the journey the entire way. We've had changes in the committee, but you've done yeoman's work as part of and brought parent insights to the process. I will say that while we can design a beautiful policy that we think will address the issues, staff implementation is going to be critical. Ongoing training for adults, staff, contractors, volunteers, has already begun, I understand, and will need to continue after its passage. So, in addition, the board, I think what we found, as we looked at the sort of findings and recommendations in the Whitehurst Report, is that the board needs to continue its oversight role. So, just because we pass a policy doesn't mean that it's being followed necessarily or it's funded, and so we have a continuing role in terms of making sure that the policy is funded and implemented and adhered to, and if we find that there's unintended consequences, that we be open to making changes. So, it's been a long road, and in addition to thanking the fellow committee task force and the committee members, I also want to thank the staff who've been involved in this policy, because it has, they've done a lot of work, both in the committee but also behind the scenes. So, Sharon Reese, Carol Hawkins, John Stillwagen, Claire Hertz, Sarah Fitch, and the other two staff people who've been there, just like from the very start to the very end, Mary Kane and Liz Large, thank you for the work on this. I think we have a really well-designed... And Lisa Rogers, sorry, thank you, Director Moore. So, tonight, I think this policy will be a big step forward. It's one of the most significant pieces of work that the board had to do coming out of the report. And as a parent who had kids in Portland Public Schools for 18 years, it makes me feel really good that we're going to be setting clear expectations for what is the right behavior and the right type of conduct between adults and our students and ensure student safety. So, with that, I think we're... So, with that, I think we're...
Thank you very much.
Ready.
The board will now vote on Resolution 5982, adoption of the professional conduct policy, excuse me, the professional conduct between adults and students policy, 5.10.064P. Do I have a motion?
I need to move, I'm sorry, Director Bailey's technical amendment.
Oh, we need to have a motion first.
All right, we need to have a motion on the amendment?
No.
On the...
The main motion first.
Get the motion on the table.
Second.
Director Bailey moves, and Director Brim Edwards seconds the motion to adopt Resolution Before we move on to... Do we have any citizen comment, Ms. Bradshaw?
No.
Okay. Would you like to move your amendment?
Yeah, so, there's another set of amendments, and they've been posted on the website. They're not material, they're primarily clarifications that came about in the last couple of days. Again, they're not materials, they don't require another public comment period, but they do need to be amended into the documents, so I'd like to move that.
Do we have a second? Second. Director Brim Edwards moves to amend Resolution 5982. Director, pass. Seconds, do we have board discussion on the amendment or the... excuse me, Brian.
Do we have board discussion on the amendment or the resolution itself?
Why don't we do the amendment first?
Okay, on the amendment. No discussion, all right, seeing none. All in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The amendment passes by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. Do we have board discussion on the underlying resolution?
So, I want to thank you everybody for all their work. I want to agree with Director Brim Edwards that this is one that we need to watch over time, both in terms of its implementation and because, I mean, we're apparently breaking new ground here. There may need to be some tweaks going forward as the reality of it gets played out. So, I think it would... we'd do well to, in a year or so, have some listening sessions with staff and students and parents to make sure that the policy is doing what it was intended to do and if any tweaks are needed.
Yeah, I would just add, this is an incredibly important policy, and most of the work was done prior to the new board members getting on in July, so we really appreciate all that work that went before. And I think these, the changes we've seen just since, I think, have continued to improve it. So, it's just an incredibly important policy, and I'm really glad we're going to move forward with it today.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody. This was... this took a while. And it took a while for a good reason, we were trying to get it right. And I think we need to see how it plays out, but I think we've done the best we could for this initial cut on this policy. It's a complicated issue. It is essential that we have a common understanding throughout this district about expectations around adult behavior regarding children. And my fervent hope is that this does not... this is not relegated to a piece of paper, that this becomes part of the DNA of PPS going forward. We need to have every adult... every adult needs to embrace responsibility to ensure the safety of every kid in this district, always. If you do nothing else, you protect children. And I hope that this policy on the books will now make it possible for people to figure out what the guidelines are, know what to do if they see something questionable, and that PPS will never again experience the shameful incidents that we've had in the past. So, thank you to everybody, and good work.
Thank you, Director Moore. Any further comment? I just want to chime in again to commend everybody on the sensitivity that was shown in developing this policy, because it would have been easy to craft policy that did impinge on the delicate caring relationships that adults and students do have and that we know are absolutely central to student learning and student engagement and students feeling cared about in our system. And it took some doing to put these guidelines in place that drew the boundaries, but not so punitively or carelessly that it could have sent a message to educators that to be less caring than they otherwise might have been. So, I'm proud of that in this policy, and we could not have arrived there without a lot of really thoughtful engagement from our teachers and all of our educators in the building. So, thank you, everyone. The board will now vote on Resolution 5982. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5982 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. And just to follow up on Director Brim Edwards' point regarding the Whitehurst investigation, this is really the last piece of work that the board committed to in terms of follow-up on the recommendations in that report, and so we're going to have a brief board discussion at one of our meetings in November to wrap that up and to recap all of the efforts that have been made, both in terms of policy, legislative advocacy, administrative... changes to administrative procedure, et cetera. So, thank you for all that good work on so many fronts. One more policy coming to us for adoption this evening is the policy on healthy substance-free learning environments. This is another policy that has benefited greatly from extensive input from staff and community members. Superintendent, or, excuse me, Director Moore, would you like to say a few words about this policy?
I think it's been alluded to earlier at tonight's meeting, so I just want to make note that this is a very substantial rewrite of this policy, and the changes are intended to incorporate an approach that prioritizes a supportive environment for students and making sure that students have access to appropriate treatment options. It's stepping away from having a punitive approach to substance use disorder issues and is intended to help students who may be suffering from substance use issues with the support and the treatment that will help them overcome it.
Thank you. The board will now vote on Resolution 5983, adoption of healthy substance-free learning environments policy, 4.30.023-P. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Second. Simultaneous there. Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Bailey seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5983. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5983?
Yes, we have Amy Rona.
I'm Amy Rona, I'm the Senior Manager of Mental Health Services District-wide. I work in the Department of Student Success and Health, and I have a lot of buckets of work, and one of those buckets is substance abuse prevention intervention and recovery. So, this policy is near and dear to my heart. I want to start by thanking Superintendent Guerrero and our Chief of Student Support, Brenda Martinek, for their leadership in this work and their support on a day-to-day basis. I want to give a shout-out to Mary Crowe, who's a social worker that we've hired to focus on this work and is the boots-on-the-ground every day, working with our community partners to get substance abuse intervention programs in our schools. A shout-out to Regents, who's helping us with our prevention work as well. To Jenny Withacome, who's a program administrator who in charge of health and is working on getting substance abuse prevention in our health curricula, K-12. We could not do this work without all of these folks, our community partners, you all. So, I just want to express gratitude for this. This should be our focus, not discipline, but really talking about how do we support our students at all tiers in this work. So, thank you, our work is just beginning, but we look forward to it, and thanks for your support.
Any further board discussion on this item?
I would just similarly say, I think this is a huge improvement. It's such a radical departure from the zero-tolerance policies that were in place when I went, you know, to school, and they were overly punitive, they did great harm, I think, in my opinion, and it sounds like experts' opinions as well. You know, great harm, without sort of focusing on that supportive environment. So, yet again, this is a policy where all the work was done prior to me getting on board, but I'm really excited.
Not at all.
I'm really excited to be able to vote yes on this, and so thanks for everyone who worked on it.
I just want to add, both the last policy and this policy, we did have new board members come in midstream, and it was really helpful to get a fresh set of eyes. I mean, we had looked at those pages of the professional contact many, many times, and it's like, all of a sudden, you guys saw things that we hadn't seen, even though we'd spent months and months poring over. So, I know we spent some time asking to look at it, and it was... our work was informed by those fresh perspectives, and the policy was made better. So, I think we all own this, as do many members of the pass board who aren't here now.
All right, I agree. The board will now vote on Resolution 5983. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5983 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, our final resolution is something that has been in the works for, ever since we adopted our vision, concluded our community process, and adopted our vision. We're pleased to be, tonight, adopting our board goals for 2019 through 2022. With the completion of our vision for Portland Public Schools, the school board superintendent and senior leaders embarked on a collaborative goal-setting process to set the path forward for the district for the next three years. These student-centered goals set by the board will be the compass that directs us toward our vision. We believe they will help us identify key organizational strategies and objectives, including our budget priorities, and will enable us to manifest our bold vision of a thriving future for all of our students. In our commitment to these meaningful, measurable student achievement goals, we will follow through with effective strategies to meet them and transparent accountability for our actions. Each of these goals is grounded in our commitment to racial equity and social justice and focuses most specifically on our students that, as a system, we have historically failed, particularly our students of color. The board will now vote on Resolution 5984, resolution to adopt our board goals. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Bailey moves, and Director Scott seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5984. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5984?
No.
All right, is there any board discussion on this resolution?
I hate to do this, but we... I think we're ahead of schedule. Sorry.
Uh-oh. Set up problem. I'm sorry, I pointed that out to her.
I smell a filibuster.
Okay, no, this is like a major piece of work.
It is.
And I don't mean like this is a major piece of work. I mean, this is a major piece of work. And I think the community would benefit, most of our work has been done in work sessions, which hasn't necessarily been during a board meeting, and I think the community and our larger community would benefit from an overview, either Superintendent, you, or someone else.
Sure, why not, Director?
I just... I think they're more...
Dr. Brown is poised.
He's on deck.
Perked right up when I said that we were ahead of schedule.
He just came in to land it.
Right, so why don't you get ready in the seat there, Dr. Brown?
And the reason, one of the reasons I ask is I do think these are more... these goals are more complex than have been adopted in the past, so I think a standard goal has been, we're going to increase high school graduation, and that's not what we're doing here, and we're not... Well...
Well, it's not not what we're doing here.
Right.
The ultimate goal is to increase graduation, but...
It's graduation plus...
Right.
A readiness standard.
With skills and knowledge.
So, I think they will benefit from an ongoing conversation, as Chair Konstam said, making it a central part of our board meeting, so that the community understands what we're aiming at, how we're directing resources, because it will be different.
I think this is the core of our work. A couple of weeks ago, marked by second-year work anniversary, I don't know if Dr. Russ Brown yet has hit his 30-day mark. Have you? One month?
I'm past 30.
All right. I'm sure it feels a little longer.
I don't think I can claim being new anymore.
All right, and I only bring that up because Dr. Brown has come aboard at the most opportune time, running with national recognition for work and supporting, providing leadership and system performance. So, coming aboard, it was clear that we needed the community to weigh in all of our stakeholders at cross-section of a year-long process around what aspiration they have for the children and the young adults of Portland Public Schools, and that's the right starting point. And it's groundbreaking for a number of reasons, because it insists on not just core academic knowledge, but skills and dispositions like caring and empathy and agency and preparing to lead a more just world. And so naturally, you know, following up on that is what global milestones can we also articulate across the grade span that indicate some clear markers and indicators for every student? But how can we focus them in a way that acknowledges that there hasn't historically been racial equity in the outcomes for students here in Portland Public Schools? And so, how do we explicitly call out those student groups, African-American students, English-language learners, students with special needs? Many of the same groups that, coincidentally, the Student Success Act is also pointing to as the key agenda, to leverage those resources to begin to put in place the supports and interventions that's going to create a more positive counter-narrative. And so, in some ways, we're kind of on track in leveraging the aspiration the community has set out for us, some goals that the board has spent months now, sort of becoming data-literate and thinking about the actual outcomes of our students, reviewing our most current data, and engaging in some pretty important conversations about how do we begin to lean the district forward in creating structures for assessing whether our students are actually making progress in some of the skill areas outlined in the vision. And so, that's very forward-thinking work, and many of those aspects are going to need to be in development, but what the board would be signaling is a commitment to working with educators and families to think about what does an eighth-grade capstone look like, where a student would have to reflect publicly on their learning journey, on their own social, emotional development, on their own sense of agency as a learner, and purpose, and a growing purpose and passion in the world. So, that's really exciting work. You don't find a test for that, per se. And so, and we also know that there's some key markers for making sure our students are going to be able to access learning by knowing how to read, for example. After this presentation, we're going to talk about what's become... After this presentation, we're going to talk about what's become an infinitely more complicated process for our budget development, because we have multiple plans, multiple compliance deadlines, we have SSA resources, we have a levy, we have multiple funding streams. The task for us will be, how do we braid those into some high-leverage strategies to actually move the needle for all students, but in particularly the students who really need our best attention? So in some ways, it's kind of a historic moment. I agree. This is, this will be a milestone for us. I know Dr. Brown here has the slides, they'll be familiar to you. I know he'll select a few choice ones for the public's benefit and to reiterate what it is about these goals that I think are going to serve us to really guide our work over the next several years. So, Dr. Brown?
Thank you. I have to agree. I do think that this is a historic moment and frankly, I'm proud to be working for a board that is willing to commit to explicit goals that, that target closing gaps and that are explicit about the students that have been underserved over time and focusing the board's work, as well as the system's work, on meeting the needs of those students. I think that is an incredibly important thing and it takes no small amount of fortitude on the board's behalf to do so and I admire that. So I will go through this quickly. For the public and the board, a lot of this is repetitious. I want to focus on a few key slides, as suggested before. We talked about some principles before. I'm not going to reiterate too much on this, except this notion that we want to have a ladder of goals that, that help us understand whether or not students are making progress towards that vision of a portrait of grad. And we want to focus on student growth as a means to achievement. We know that if we're going to close gaps, we need to have different rates of growth. We have to accelerate the growth of students who are behind so that they can catch up and achieve on parity with their peers across the system. So while achievement can happen separate from growth, one cannot produce changes in achievement without accelerating growth. It is a necessity. And so the emphasis on growth, I think, gives the board and the community a leading indicator for whether or not we're seeing the changes that we expect. Again, all of the above links upward to the portrait of the grad and I think one of the things that's really interesting about this is that by the time we get to middle school, we move away from foundational skills and we start talking about having students begin to develop their interests, develop their full sort of person and the person that we expect to see in that portrait of a grad. And then when we get to the, the final post-secondary readiness, we talk about honoring multiple pathways that students can demonstrate that readiness to enter the post-secondary world, pathways that we'll expand upon over time. So third grade reading, we talked about this before, only 44% of our underserved students of color are demonstrating expected growth. That means less than half are doing so, that means they're actually losing ground, the gaps are actually getting wider over time. So the goal, we have to accelerate growth. If we're going to close that gap, more than 50% of the students need to meet their growth target. The board is committed to 60% and that will, over time, close gaps if that, that goal is obtained. And again, fifth grade math, similar idea. We, in third grade reading, we were going from learning to read to reading to learn. In fifth grade math, we want students to have those foundational skills so that they can be prepared to, to enter and take advantage of advanced mathematics as they move forward. Similar target, moving again for underserved students of color to, to meet or exceed growth target at 60% of the time. We get to the eighth grade goal, as I mentioned earlier, this is really the ambitious goal and it has to be aligned to the redesign of middle school. And so at this point, we're anchoring this goal to things that exist and, and so that'll be S back, English Language Arts and Mathematics and the proportion of students who meet career and, the career and college readiness threshold for being on track in both reading and mathematics. That's a placeholder and we fully commit to develop a full rubric that captures what we expect in middle school as we do the middle school redesign. Those two things need to be done together or there'll be a misalignment between the goal and what we're actually trying to do.
Can you go back two slides again there, Dr. Brown, just to highlight some of the more forward-thinking attributes we would be looking to assess in our students?
Sure. Again, you know, when we're thinking about this, we're really thinking about what it means for students to be prepared to enter high school ready, to, to have done some of that exploratory thinking. Am I going into a CTE pathway? You know, what am I thinking in terms of, again, health and wellbeing, social, emotional skills, really becoming a whole person at a point in time where students are really beginning to struggle with that and beginning to explore who they're going to be. And so again, as we're thinking about redesigning middle school, affording a more rounded opportunity for students in middle school, we want, again, the, the rubric that is used to measure that to reflect that complexity and to be aligned to what we're doing. And again, that's unchanged from what we've done before. And again, because this is anchored right now to, to the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium assessment, we're just looking to raise the proportion of students who are meeting that on-track for career and college readiness, both in reading and mathematics. The one where we've spent maybe the most time thinking about and iterating back and forth, and I think it's really been an important dialogue and I think we've landed in a really good space. Portland has some things to be excited about. We do some things well here. Lots of students have access to advanced coursework. Lots of students participate in advanced placement or IB or dual credit or CTE pathways. It's really an extraordinary number of kids, but almost 90% of students who graduate participate in one of those pathways, which is phenomenal. Most systems around the country would be thrilled to have those sort of participation numbers. In addition, those students who are participating are largely successful. So if students participate in AP, they're doing well in AP. If they participate in IB, they're doing well in IB. And it's really pretty impressive in that regard. So Portland is, in some regards, quite a bit ahead of other systems. So we start talking about, well, what does it really mean to be post-secondary ready? So we raised the bar a little bit and we started playing with, well, what, what would we be comfortable with as an adequate threshold to feel really comfortable that the students who meet this threshold or these thresholds would really be post-secondary ready? And, and the board, and again, going back and forth and looking at the data, came up with some really, I think, rigorous thresholds for this. So instead of simply participating with a C or above in an AP course, no, this is participating and earning a C or above in three or more AP courses, doing the same, three or more IB courses with a C or above, three or more dual credit courses with a C or above, completing a CTE completer pathway. So participating in a full pathway for CTE and passing that with a C or above. And we're dual credit, earning dual credits, like we've mentioned before. And then finally, and I was very tickled that we were able to get at this, the proportion of students who are meeting that C or biliteracy, who have demonstrated that they are fully bilitered in, in more than one language, which, you know, for our second language learners and the folks that were here, that is really the potential, that students who come to us with a first language, we should build upon that and they should graduate with, with two languages and be fully bilitered. The nice thing about this and the way it's laid out, again, it honors the different ways that students can approach and move through high school and demonstrate that they're, they're on track for post-secondary readiness. Is that comprehensive yet? No, there are some things we want to add to that. So currently, about 60% of students are meeting one of those criteria. They're passing three or more AP classes. They're passing three or more IB classes. When I say passing, that's with a C or above. The grade point averages for these students are well above 3.0 in each of these categories. About 5% of those students, and you can see, it's, it's about 20% down the row. You got 18, 19, 20% in each of these categories, with the exception of biliteracy. Unfortunately, in our, for our students of color who have been historically underserved, it's only about 50% meeting this threshold. And so again, we want to elevate that, we want to be focused on meeting the, elevating the post-secondary readiness for our students of color as well. And so the target for this is to close that gap by more than half, to go from 50% to 56% by 2022 of our historically underserved students of color who are meeting one or more of these pathways to post-secondary readiness. And again, at this point, these are primarily academic in nature, but we are talking about expanding this also to include arts pathways. There just simply wasn't enough time to do, do that justice yet and so we want to spend down, spend time doing the course mapping similar to what we would do with CTE so that we have very clear viable pathways that we think are evidence of post-secondary readiness in the arts. And likewise, we'll use the SAT and college readiness exams as well. So four goals that I think benchmark progress from, for a student going from elementary through middle and then finally into post-secondary readiness and again, anchored to our racial equity and social justice framework.
Thank you. Director Bailey?
I agree. These are incredible goals that we're going after and a big step forward. I would like to pause this program for an unpaid political announcement, because we will not be able to make progress on these goals unless voters pass in November the renewal of our five-year teacher's levy. Again, this levy keeps the tax rate exactly where it has been for the last five years. It pays for over 800 teachers spread throughout the district. All the money goes directly into the classroom and we heard earlier from our renewal of the Citizens Budget Review Committee, that that independent group verifies that every penny goes straight into the classroom. So I hope you all join me in voting yes. I'm Scott Bailey and I, what's the wording? I approve this message. There we go.
Thank you. Maxine, I wanted to ask you to share your perspective on our goals and also just on the process that we had together.
So today was the first meeting of the District Student Council, which was really exciting. If you don't know, it's the Student Council that I helped to run that involves students from every single high school from our school district. And one of the first things that we talked about was this post-secondary readiness goal and I kind of started this discussion about how standardized test scores are going to be used when thinking about post-secondary readiness, sorry. And I realized that, you know, I didn't completely take into account that we were going to be voting on this tonight, but through kind of the discussion that we had, bringing the concerns that we have, you know, to you, Dr. Brown, and then also to you, Director Konstam, in order to kind of like work through the inequities that we see that are within these goals right now, we talked about how CTE is a very undefined term for a lot of schools and students within the District Student Council didn't even know what CTE was to begin with and bringing, like having a universal, like universal classes at these, at high schools so that, you know, when you're then getting the statistics back about post-secondary readiness, it's not, it's probably going to be all over the board for the next, you know, while, because there isn't a universal term to describe CTE or like different classes, because we talked about, you know, how at Benson, they have these specific majors that are CTE, but you know what, excuse me, schools like, I don't know, we were talking about Wilson, you know, the woodshop class can be considered a CTE, but it can also be considered an elective and that's really confusing for some students. We also talked about inequities within, you know, the alternative schools and the charter schools. They don't have AP or IB or dual credit. They kind of just have what's there for them and that creates a big inequity when thinking about, you know, the, the post-secondary readiness. They're receiving post-secondary readiness from other classes and from people that are giving them more support versus these AP and IB classes. Another thing that we talked about was money and how money kind of factors into all these things when you're taking an AP or IB class. Those tests cost a lot of money. I was really surprised to find out that the tests that I've been taking for the last two years that were normally like around $60, I now have to pay $90 for my AP, sorry, for my night, for my AP classes and I, that's kind of crazy to me and so, again, thinking about readiness with that lens of equity, there's a lot of students, and I know that we have, you know, fee waivers that can help with those costs, but it's really hard still for a lot of families to put up that money to take a test that, you know, it is practicing their readiness, because unfortunately standardized test scores still do matter when it comes to college and making sure that, you know, you can get into that, but it's still really hard when you have to pay and also talking about, sorry, I'm, one more thing, post-secondary readiness, looking at, you know, we talked about the college and career readiness classes that a lot of high schools are offering right now and how looking at apprenticeships and trade schools and a lot of other pathways would be a really good way to also measure readiness, because not every student wants to go to college or has the option to go to college and, I don't know, it's not something that we can put in the goals right now, but I think it's some, an ongoing discussion that can happen between you and I, Dr. Brown, and also, you know, other board members that want to be involved about secondary or post-secondary readiness, because it's obviously very important that everything is building up to this and how can we prepare students for the most, or like the best possible chance that they have of succeeding after high school? That's all I have.
So I would certainly look forward to that conversation. I do want to, for a point of clarification, the, the goal as stated right now actually is not connected in any way to standardized assessment. So if you look at the participating AP or IB or dual credit, none of those are anchored to passing those assessments. And part of that, and frankly, I had a concern with that, that the participation in those things is in part an issue of equity and access. And instead, this is, does a student participate in the course and get a passing grade? I think that's an incredibly valid point, because while we have lots and lots of students who participate in AP, a much smaller proportion participate in the assessment, the same is true for IB, and I suspect that that is an access issue. Like you said, they're about 100 bucks a pop. The IB ones are a little bit more and so if I'm taking three or four courses, this is, that's a lot of money. So I, valid point, I would look forward to an ongoing dialogue.
Chair, can I, I'm listening to Maxine. If you could go back two slides to those post-readiness metrics, because we had a lot of discussion about the, sort of the D or above, sort of like, do we consider that sort of the threshold? And I'm noticing that we're calling out a C or better in three in each of those categories, but I don't see a letter grade for CTE completers necessarily. It's the only one that doesn't have that.
That's an omission on my behalf. It's part of the mix. To get a completer, you have to have a C or above in those courses to be counted.
Okay. I noticed our chief academic officer's eyebrows also went up. So for clarification, we're, we're not just wanting to count CTE completers, D or better, but the same C or above would apply in that category as well.
And it, and one of the interesting things here, and I, I think student member Lateral brings up a good point, different schools have different pathways or favor different pathways. So some schools are very much an AP-focused, some schools are an IB-focused. And so a building that has an IB focus may have very few AP courses in it and very little CTE offer, CTE offering. On the other hand, a school like Benson, primarily CTE, and those CTE pathways are very clear within that school. And so it doesn't surprise me that students in settings that don't emphasize one or the other would be less familiar with, with what their peers are experiencing in another school.
And the other piece of that too, is that with our neighborhood school system and the inability to transfer really, you have the CTE offerings that are available in your neighborhood high school, which may not align with your interests, like the offerings in another high school.
But they're doing some amazing things and if you look at the matrix across the district, the offerings are becoming just much more comprehensive at every school. It's awesome.
Yeah. And I, I think one of the advantages of calling things out like this is that when students talk to their counselors in high school, there's going to be much more explicit direction and discussions about, you know, what, these are your options and, you know, if you're interested in X, this is how you do it. I think that's, that's a real benefit of kind of calling- I think that's, that's a real benefit of kind of calling things out this way. I did have, I did want to, I had a question, actually, for the, for the middle school, the high school readiness at eighth grade. So right now, we've got a placeholder that's, that's really only a test score.
Correct.
Two test scores. And the, the plan is that we're gonna, as we develop the middle school redesign, we're going to be adding, you know, a much more robust, I guess is the word, and, and varied portfolio of characteristics or achievements. So I notice on the, on the high school one, we're going to be adding to this as well. And you had some dates attached.
Yep.
So do we have any, do we have any dates that we can attach to the development of the, the portfolio rubric for the middle school?
I think we're with you in spirit in wanting to see that, you know, a timeline. What's complicated about setting the metric is we haven't actually articulated, defined or developed what the programmatic spec is yet to measure it.
I'm not suggesting that we add it to the, to the metric. I'm just saying, for my benefit and for anybody else who is listening, it's going to take a little while. So can you give us even a ballpark, like are we talking two years down the road, three years down the road? I mean, what are we?
I think we'd all, I think we'd all like to proceed expeditiously. As you know, there was an initial convening of a middle school task force to try to take stock of an inventory of offerings across the comprehensives and the KDA8s to try to see where we could take some finite resources and, you know, create some, some space there for more equitable offerings. That's a Band-Aid in all of our eyes. So we're excited about kind of moving into sort of a second phase of that. Part of that is learning where in just a couple of other places around the country, they've also taken on middle school redesign. And Dr. Moore, I'm glad you were able to join us to Miami-Dade County Public Schools, where we looked at their middle school redesign, which is 18 to 24 months ahead of us, but provided a lot of sort of lessons about how they began to form, formulate what that middle grade program could look like. And it started with some heavy student input about the kind of experience that they want during those pivotal years. And a lot of it focused on youth development and identity formation and those persistency skills that are going to be important to them having a successful freshman and beyond year. So we have a few things on our plate right now, as you know. We're hoping soon after the winter break to begin to outline a process and convene a cross-section of stakeholders and lay out a timeline. I don't think we'll, we'll make the budget development cycle for a wholesale redesign of our schools, but we want to continue to fill in the gaps where arts pathways are missing and where elective offerings are insufficient or inequitable, for instance in our KDA8s. But our hope is for the following budget cycle, we're talking about a wholesale how we place school in the middle grades change, and that's going to take a lot of community engagement so that we have everyone's full support and voice. So it isn't something we, we want to proceed without that level of proper care and thought. So, so that's kind of the rough timeline and as much as I could speak to at this point. So stay tuned after the winter break to begin to hear more about how we envision the middle school redesign work taking off.
And even in Miami, they were piloting it in what, a dozen out of, how many, they have 50 middle schools or something like that?
They had almost as many middle schools as we have schools in our portfolio.
They had 50 middle schools, 48 K8s, I think.
So only, they were only a dozen schools, two years in, experimenting with very promising reforms to curriculum and structure and a very structured social emotional learning as well.
Yep. So we're excited about that. Once we get some of these other foundational pieces and the continuous improvement cycle that we look forward now, it's one thing to land on some goals, it's another to start incorporating a progress monitoring process as a board and as, as a leadership in the administration to actually track and disaggregate how we're doing along some of these indicators over the course of the year. If we're tracking growth, that's supposed to be real-time information to inform not just our, our teachers and our school improvement efforts, but also the system moves that we make and how we distribute resources and attention.
Thank you. Can I just add to that? I, I think anybody who's been paying attention to goal setting that has happened in the past at PPS, most of the goals have not been really actionable. I mean, they've been, they've been things like, you know, we're going to raise the graduation rate, which is actually an accumulation of 12 or 13 years' worth of stuff that happens to a kid. And it's not really something that you can use for continuous improvement. You, you can't use that to evaluate the progress that the district is making or an individual kid is making. And these are different, and they're deliberately different. And they may not be perfect. We may end up having to, you know, Director Scott says this all the time, you know, we may be taking another look at this down the road and we may have to make some tweaks over time. And as things shake out and we get better, you know, figuring out indicators and all that. But I, this is a big change. This is a really big change. And, and I think it's important. And, and I hope people are willing to suspend disbelief and, and kind of watch how we can use this to actually propel real improvement in the district.
Chair Konstam, I want to point out that we're now five minutes over, so Director Brim Edwards should be very happy.
Back on track.
I haven't even got a chance to comment yet, so.
I just wanted to follow up on Director Moore's comments there because I did want to place this in the context of our commitment as a board to really changing our governance practices. And we have done a lot of work thinking about what makes school boards effective and how can school boards really impact student achievement. And the most important piece of that is to focus on very clear student achievement goals and to be very disciplined about how we spend our time in board meetings. And that's how boards are able to make a difference and to really bring that focus on setting clear goals and progress monitoring throughout the, the year and then bringing that focus into the budget process so that it really guides our conversations about resource allocation. And we're starting to see some puzzle pieces come together. As Dr. Brown said when he, he began his presentation, all of these goals are, are focused toward our vision, our PPS vision and our portrait of a graduate. And so everything is in service to that. And that was partly what, what made it hard because some of the things that the community brought forward in that visioning process are tough to measure. The, the attributes, the skills and attributes that the superintendent was referring to that are so important to helping human beings become citizens and productive human beings. It's not just about like meeting a certain mastery in a certain academic subject area. So these are the puzzle pieces that are coming together from a governance perspective as well. And I think we have remarkable unity as a board in our commitment to being really focused on, on laser, on student achievement. And I think, leading into our next item on the agenda, I think we are going to see a very different orientation in our, in our budget process. So thank you, everybody, for really digging into this process. We had, I think, seven times that we visited this goal-setting process from the very first open brainstorming to some pretty intense, you know, wordsmithing toward the end there. But I think it was, in my opinion, a really productive collaborative process.
Can I go? Great. Sorry.
Call the question.
No. We're over. Okay. So I just, point of clarification. So in the goals, it has, say, for example, third grade, must accelerate growth for underserved students of color. Talk about, there's this targeted universalism. Talk about sped students, ELL students. How do, how from a sort of performance, not performance management, but from a measurement standpoint, we have these set of goals and yet we also have our larger goals related to our, our students being at grade level and being proficient or being, exceeding proficiency. So to kind of talk about how that works because I'm just wanting parents to see their students in these, especially if they've been students who have been underserved in the past.
Sure. So again, if, if we're going to close achievement gaps, we, we have to accelerate growth. It is a necessary precondition to be able to do that. And that's something that you can see during the course of an academic year. I appreciate the, the board's focus on racial equity and really staying clearly focused on racial equity because quite frankly, you know, if we introduce socioeconomic status, this, that, or the other, it sort of detracts from where we have to focus. And that being said, you know, we heard some parents today, you know, there's an overrepresentation of students of color in special ed. There's an overrepresentation of students of color in second language acquisition, you know, our emerging bilingual students. So I, I believe the, the ways we're like focused on race is a good first step with this. Again, we may need to iterate over time, but I think for the system to begin to think about differentiating and trying to be culturally sustaining in its practices, it makes sense to focus first on race and then to build in the intersectionality of other components of identity over time.
And in any case, we'll have the data available for that.
And we'll report it out. And, and again, I think that's part of that iterative dialogue. I, I think, I, I appreciate Director Scott for having introduced that idea and sort of, you know, been echoing it over time. This is not carved in stone. We will need to revisit over time. We will need to refocus as we move forward. Even if everything goes to plan, then at a, a point in the future, we will want to reflect about what's the next set of goals and how will we refine as we move forward.
And the other thing, just to, to add on this point, is that the other metrics are being tracked as you, as you mentioned. And if we see great progress here, but we don't see progress in other areas that you're pointing out, a year or two from now, we can say, well, okay, so great success. And how do we now apply those same strategies to these other groups? So that, that's the iterative process that we'll, we'll go through.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And my guess is if we make progress here, we're going to be making progress universally.
Yeah. If we're not paying attention to students receiving special education services, we're going to have a tough time moving the needle for any of our racial groups.
So while I'm, I like the third and fifth grade goals. I think the eighth grade one I'm going to need to warm up to once it becomes more complete. But the one that I think is really going to resonate with a lot of our community is the post-secondary readiness because too often we used graduation as the indicator that, that students were ready for their next step. And in fact, in 2012, when PPS cut a full instructional day for high school students, sort of the rationale was most students are, are on track to graduate. And if they're not, they'll get a full school day, but the vast majority of students weren't getting a full school day. But there was this sort of attachment to, well, we're getting students, you know, we're increasing in graduation rate. But the reality is, I think, most parents knew that that wasn't the only benchmark that mattered, that students could graduate but not yet be prepared to take, you know, basic math at the community college or get into a four-year university or any of the other things they want to do. So I think setting these sort of graduation plus requirements is really going to be a game changer because I believe our students rise to the expectations that we have for them. And when we said it was, what you needed was graduation, I think a lot of kids got there. They buckled down. And I think if we say, these are better indicators of readiness and counselors start forecasting students into those classes, students get supports, they have access to more classes and more supports, that our students are going to surprise us and rise to the benchmark because I think that they know that those are more realistic measurements of whether they're ready for their next step. So for me, that is, I'm super excited about it. And I also want to thank Director Bailey for really sort of changing the board's view on the third and fifth grade of what we needed to focus on. So I want to still be attached to proficiency because I know kid, parents want to feel like, is my kid, is my child at, you know, reading at grade level? But we have to pay attention to growth as a primary measurement and the proficiency. So I think these are a super strong set and of goals and for sure, they'll need to be revised and reviewed, but great start.
And I think it presents us with a challenge for how to communicate with parents.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. The board will now vote on Resolution 5984, our board goals for 2019 through 2022. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5984 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. And before we go on to our scheduled next agenda item, Maxine, I know you need to get going, but I wondered, did you want to make any more of a report from your District Student Council meeting or did you cover what you wanted to say?
I think I covered it, but I'm excited for the year. And also Shanice Clark and I did a really fun visit this morning at Mount Scott Learning Center, which was really awesome, and I thought that was worth including. I don't know, I'm excited to go to bed. It's been a long day. But this was a successful meeting for me at least, and I think this afternoon with the District Student Council was really successful in getting everyone oriented with what we do, especially with the coming, with this goal and with the coming things. Sorry, my brain is failing now. But yeah, it was good.
Do you want to put out a call for which are the high schools from which you still don't have a student representative?
Alliance at Meek. Jefferson, Jefferson? It's either Jefferson or Roosevelt. I can't remember which, I'm sorry.
Jefferson.
Yeah, we had, oh, yeah, Nathaniel's from Jefferson. Okay, so then it's Roosevelt. Sorry. I have someone from Lincoln, I have someone from Wilson. Grant.
Okay. All right. Come on, Generals.
Yeah, Generals, let's go.
Thank you.
That's it.
And, and good night.
Thank you.
We'll miss you. Resolution to approve a budget development calendar for the 2021 fiscal year aligned with Portland Public Schools Reimagine Student Success Act and a multi-year business plan. Tonight, the board will be voting on this resolution for the budget development calendar for the 2021 fiscal year. Superintendent, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure. Onto a lighter and more straightforward topic. Our budget development process, which is only further complicated this fall, given the added benefit and investment that we're going to be making here in Oregon and what that might look like in PPS. So the challenge will be how we organize it all in an impactful way, but we have our CFO, Cynthia Lee, back at the podium.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Superintendent. It is my privilege and excitement to bring forward the budget calendar for 202021. For your approval tonight, you have seen the draft copy of this budget calendar on September 23, 2019. Your approval of this budget calendar tonight will allow the staff to move forward with the goals that the board approved tonight, as well as all the good work that to be done with the Real Imagined and the Student Success Act, as well as the multi-year business plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
It looked great. Thank you.
Thank you. This is only a beginning for the next nine months.
I really liked the integration of the, of the CBRC, the Citizens Budget Review Committee, with the board, because often it seemed like we were two ships in different lanes, heading in different places. And I think this has us both sort of aligned through the process and getting the same information. And I think it'll make it easier for them to do their job, and they actually, I think that the, the value that they provide will be greater because of the, that sort of synergy between the processes.
Thank you for your feedback.
And, and am I correct that this is the first time in living memory that PPS has had a multi-year business plan?
I've only been here for nine months, so it's hard for me to say.
Well, I think you would be the living memory, so, if you say so.
Okay. I am old. I will grant you that.
I just mean you, I just mean you have been thoughtfully engaged with the district for a very long time.
For years, and years.
Okay. We'll get this resolution on the table. The board will now vote on Resolution 5985 to approve the Budget Development Calendar for the 2021 fiscal year aligned with our vision, Portland Public Schools Reimagined, the Student Success Act, and a multi-year business plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Scott moves, and Director Brim Edward seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5985. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5985?
No.
Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
Just from the superintendent chair. I appreciate sort of what looks like a calendar for moving forward, but I do want to confess, we had a lengthy conversation in our cabinet meeting this morning, because it is a little anxiety-inducing. There's a lot of moving parts to do this work strategically, as we're emerging strategies. We have an SSA timeline that's constrained and almost unrealistic, and we want to be forward-thinking and scaffold and sequence the work over multiple years. So, I, something about me wants to just sort of say, bear with us. I'll say in advance, it's going to be iterative. We're going to do our best to comply with timelines and requirements that we have to meet, knowing that we're going to continue to spend the next number of months to put forward as thoughtful a plan that the general public could read and understand simply where we're going to be putting in our time and effort and resources. So, and this work is now getting very interdisciplinary among our multiple departments and our school communities, so it requires that much more collaboration. So, I just wanted to share with you a little flavor of the long talk we had this morning.
No, thank you. That's important for us to hear.
I, I think the word of the evening is iterative.
The board will now vote on Resolution 5985. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Excuse me? I think I may have missed Director Bailey.
A quick question. Along with the quote "big tent" meetings, unquote, on the schedule, are there targeted meetings to groups that usually don't show up at those big meetings?
There's, aside from the bigger community engagement meeting, there are some targeted focus groups. That includes several special education focus groups, migrant education, families. We are partnering with Coalition of Communities of Color to also identify where there might be pockets of folks we can go out to and reach out to, in addition to the survey and what all of our employees are also getting the opportunity to weigh in on. Is there a particular, we want to make sure, and we're querying, the groups that are called out specifically in the SSA for whom these resources are to benefit. So, we want to be able to say very confidently that every one of those groups was, was not just informed, but had the opportunity to weigh in.
Right, thanks. Yes.
I'd just like to say, yeah, maybe the Head Start Community, families.
They're already on the calendar for a meeting, yes.
The board will now vote on Resolution 5985. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5985 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Lateral headed home. All right. Board, committee, and conference reports. Last month, Director Bailey and Director Moore had the opportunity with some of the district staff to attend the Council of Urban Boards of Education Conference in Miami. I would like to ask them, or one of them, to please tell us what they learned.
Uh, great. So, I went, went to Miami with a number of staff and Director Moore and Superintendent. The first day and a half, we're touring schools in Miami. The first day was focused on middle schools, and they are doing some really interesting things there. And as Superintendent Gruber said, the process started with student focus groups, and then they had staff watch the student comments, and it brought them to tears. Because it's pretty awful when you care about kids and you hear so many of our, of their children were saying, nobody knows me in, in my school, nobody cares about me. And that was a powerful push for change. So, they have 12 middle schools that are in the second year of a pilot, and I'll describe that briefly. They switched to a block schedule with four classes every day, which allowed them more electives. We saw an incredible acoustic guitar. There were at least 40 kids in there playing Bach. And, I mean, they were in month two, most of them not having picked up an instrument before. One, the instruments, the guitars were beautiful. But two, those kids were laser-focused, and they sounded great. But along with more electives was also a class every other day, really focused on social and emotional learning. It was also, it, it served to multiple purposes. It was like an advisory from years ago, kind of updated. So, along with some time to catch up on homework, throughout the class, there were sometimes some assignments that were students were doing in small groups, while individual students met with the teacher for some mentoring. They had a whole language around decision-making and how, you know, and, and so, one of the, one of the prompts from in the one-on-one mentoring was, tell me about a good decision. And what was the, the term they had? They, they had their own term for that, and they had the Maui, it's not M-A-U-I, but curriculum that they bought into, so that students had a common language for, yeah, this is what a good decision was, where I was true to myself and was a good friend. And here's a situation where I was a victim, where I didn't really stick up for myself, or I went along with the gang, or whatever. So, that was part of the review, along with, hey, how's math class going? Yeah, still having. So, talking about some strategies for dealing with those courses where maybe it didn't quite sync up with the, with the teacher, but here's some ways to help you succeed. So, there's a lot of different examples of that going on in that class. So, they, that was, I think, a key, those were the two, two takeaways. Certainly something that we can import, those, some of those ideas here, going forward. So, um, yeah, that was, that was pretty neat. We also looked at an academy that was actually now pre-K through 12, and it was an interesting experiment and looked to be pretty successful. We saw a lot of uniforms in Miami. But this academy had, from the beginning, small class sizes, multilingual from the And they had really good academic outcomes as well. A lot of kids taking responsibility for their learning. I could see that at the high school level especially. So, again, an interesting one to look at. It was, they, they are a big choice district. They have like the world's biggest school bus fleet, because they are moving students all over. That may not sit well here, so maybe we do, do things differently, but adopt some of those same principles that they're doing in the schools throughout our system, as opposed to making it a, a choice flavor. And then, there was a, I guess, day and a half, two, two days roughly in a conference. One of the workshops in particular I enjoyed was a district in Texas that looked to be about two years further than we are in terms of the whole goal-setting process. And it was noticeable to use the metrics they were using, there was very little change in those first two years, because it takes time to get that system in place before you start to see the results tick up. So, that, that should be, be a warning to all of us, or a caution to all of us, in terms of how quickly to expect results in that first year or two.
Thank you.
Anything you want to add?
Um, it just, it was impressive to me how, the way they talked about how they had redesigned the middle schools. It was clearly kind of centered on the social-emotional well-being of students. And I saw some, you know, there are all kinds of exercises that they have to do, and I saw some things on the walls, like, you know, assignments on the walls that, that evidenced a level of self-reflection among middle school students that I would welcome among most adults. So, it was impressive. And a graduation rate of 90%. I visited a school that was mostly CT, that was CTE. 100% students of color, 94% rate free and reduced lunch, 89% graduation rate. And it was just a given.
All, all the schools we went to were very much majority students of color.
Yep.
And again, Miami, over the last 10 years, moved from a 50% graduation rate to 90%.
I'll only add the highlight of the Honors Jazz Band that we, that was happy, that was really excited to perform with us. This is an all African-American student Honors Jazz Band who recently only picked up instruments and were showing off for us. I just want to give a public shout-out and appreciation to Superintendent Alberto Carvallo, Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Marie Esquero, and their Executive Director of their Middle School redesign, Ilya Perez, as well, as well as our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Luis Valentino, who coordinated our visits with that team. It's not my first time doing a learning journey in Miami, and each time has been very insightful to the work that we're trying to embark on.
Yeah, yes, our superintendent accompanied us on the tour of one of the schools. So, was available for questions all the way through, was very helpful.
Great. So glad you had the opportunity to do that. Director Moore, did you want to share anything from the policy? Did you have a policy committee meeting?
Um, yes, we had, we had a meeting yesterday. It was kind of a foundational meeting for the, for the year's work. We talked about upcoming work that we can expect to do. We talked about a charter for the committee to kind of establish what the scope, scope of work is. And we're going to be meeting henceforth every three weeks. And we've got a pretty, we're looking ahead to, I think, a, a pretty intensive few months where we got to get some serious work done.
That's here again.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
I have a committee report.
Okay.
And also, one of their other business items. So, the Audit Committee met on October 9. This is the newly constituted Audit Committee with Director Scott and Director DePass and our two community members. We talked about the Audit Charter, and I think based on the Policy Committee Charter draft, that we might look at that as a common template. We also talked about the Auditor's Goals. So, at some point, for the rest of the board, we'll share those goals, because the Auditor reports to the board, and we just use the, basically, the position description as, as the basis for the goals, and so we'll share, we'll share that with everybody. We also talked about a risk assessment, which the last one was done in 2016. We need an updated one, at least the aspect that the Auditors need to be able to build off an audit plan. Also, coming to the full board is a recommendation from the committee that we add another audit to the, to the audit and the review that we already have sort of in the pipeline, and this is around ACH testing. So, that came out of committee with a recommendation, and will hopefully get on the agenda, because it will need to be approved, or considered and approved by the full board. We also reviewed the Secretary of State's Division Audit and the management response to date. The full board will have some work in terms of the response. It's not really the work of the Audit Committee, but rather, it's the full board, so that'll be coming here. And then, we had an update from our two Auditors, and that was a committee meeting, but like the Policy Committee, it was foundational, talking about the, the year ahead with the new committee members. So, that was the Audit Committee. The only other piece, other business that I'm, will just raise, that it's not at all right, but there have been a number, we all got some correspondence, but there's also been a number of people in the zone that I, I don't represent, that I am, that I come from.
Reside in.
Reside in, regarding the renaming of Kellogg to a different name. And I think that, there's a lot of people in the community that feel this might be the time to rename the school, so I'll forward some of the ideas that have come forward, and we have, we have a naming policy, so I just want to.
That was a nice letter we got from a couple of students.
Yeah. So, there's a couple of other ideas as well, from school communities that are excited about the possibility of a new school and wanting to embrace it as sort of of, of the outer southeast community versus of the outer southeast. It probably wasn't even outer, it probably was outer, outer southeast when Kellogg was originally built. So, I'll forward that to the board as well.
Thank you very much. Okay. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned. The next meeting of the board will be held October 29.